Good morning, we now call this council meeting to order. We ask that if you have a cellphone at this time, you will place it on silent, mute, or off. If you'd be so kind. We'll be led in prayer by Madam Clerk followed by the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Oh God of might, wisdom, and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted, and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we reside. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Present.
West?
Present.
Ruth?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present. Move for the approval of a minutes?
So moved.
My second.
Are there any comments? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. Now move to public comments on the agenda items only. If you have public comments, we ask that you would limit your comments to the agenda items only at this time. If you're going to make public comments, we ask that you would sign in the sign-in sheet at the podium, your name and your address. There ain't none, Madam Clerk.
Resolution. Whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Ronald Bradley Jr., twenty-one-eleven West Ninth Street, Chester, PA, one-nine-oh-one-three. Jermaine Slow, ten-nineteen Lincoln Street, Chester, PA, one-nine-oh-one-three. Number three, Doris Clark Smith, twenty-three-twenty-one West Fourth Street, Chester, PA, one-nine-oh-one-three. Number four, Silas Tate, nineteen-seventeen West Fourth Street, Chester, PA, one-nine-oh-one-three. Number five, David Hamler, eleven-thirty-two Highland Avenue, Chester, PA, one-nine-oh-one-three. Number six, Lucille Turner, twenty-one-oh-one Hyatt Street, Chester, PA, one-nine-oh-one-three. Number seven, Miguel Masa, ten-oh-seven Curlin Street, Chester, PA, one-nine-oh-one-three. Number eight, Andrea White, twenty-nine-twenty West Eleventh Street, Chester, PA, one-nine-oh-one-three. Number nine, Shirley Myers, thirty-oh-five West Sixth Street, Chester, PA, one-nine-oh-one-three. And number ten, Anthony Sellers, twenty-six-oh-seven West Sixth Street, Chester, PA, one-nine-oh-one-three. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined the aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the twenty-one-hundred block of West Ninth Street, in the one-thousand block of Lincoln Street, in the twenty-three-hundred block of West Fourth Street, in the nineteen-hundred block of West Fourth Street, in the eleven-hundred block of Highland Avenue, in the twenty-one-hundred block of Hyatt Street, in the one-thousand block of Curlin Street, in the twenty-nine-hundred block of West Eleventh Street, in the three-thousand block of West Sixth Street, and in the twenty-six-hundred block of West Sixth Street in the City of Chester. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of the following individuals to the position of Patrol Officer, Chester Police Department, Department of Public Affairs, effective July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, with a one-year probationary period on a full-time basis with all benefits applicable thereto at the salary range provided in the annual appropriation ordinance. Number one, Casey Morris. Number two, Michael Brozinski. Further, that said patrol officers are required to reside in the City of Chester for the first five years of employment and must submit proof of residency to the Human Resources Department within three months of their date of hire. There thereafter, they may maintain their residence within fifty miles of City Hall. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Anice Miller to the position of Human Resources Journalist, Office of Human Resources, Department of Accounts and Finance, with all benefits applicable thereto, effective July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, for thirty-seven-point-five hours per week at the salary as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance. Said individual has successfully completed the ninety-day probationary period. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the transfer of Lisa D. Morse-Wilwell from the position of interim Human Resources Journalist, Office of Human Resources, Department of Accounts and Finance, to the position of Human Resources Assistant, Office of Human Resources, Department of Accounts and Finance, with all benefits applicable for thirty-seven-point-five hours per week, effective July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at the salary as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance. Said individual has successfully completed the sixty-day probationary period. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Xavier Nguyen to the part-time position of Secretary, Department of Accounts and Finance, effective July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, for twenty hours per week at the salary as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance. Said individual has successfully completed the sixty-day probationary period. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Leonard Leitner to the position of Chief Operating Officer, effective August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, for thirty-seven-point-five hours per week, health insurance beginning October first, twenty-twenty-two, at the salary of one-hundred-fifty-five thousand dollars per year. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to prepare the specifications for the advertisement of bids for the following. Number one, Memorial Park pool upgrades. And number two, fire station eighty-two roof replacement. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk to advertise the aforementioned bids. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to enter into an inter-municipal cooperation agreement between the City of Chester, County of Delaware, county, I'm sorry, County of Delaware, Borough of Darby, and the Township of Upper Darby to receive allocated funds in the amount of fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-sixty-eight dollars from the United States Department of Justice, from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG Program Award for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Further, that it does authorize the mayor and the acting city clerk to execute said attached agreement for and on behalf of the City of Chester. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Be it resolved, the City of Chester Delaware County applicant hereby request a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority not to exceed three million dollars to be used for the Chester Waterfront, West Second Street, Phase Two project. Be it further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate, that is Kirkland Mayor and Candace Newsome City Clerk, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the City of Chester and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. I, Joanne Neal, duly qualified Acting City Clerk of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, does hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and correct copy of a resolution duly adopted by a majority vote of the Council of the City of Chester at a regular meeting held on July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and said resolution has been recorded in the minutes of the City of Chester and remains in effect as of this date. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Just, just so we have a clarity and understanding of this, um, these monies that are being utilized. We are beautifying the area down at the waterfront and this is the streetscape area that is coming towards the waterfront so that when folks come into the City of Chester, they see a, um, a more modernized, updated, beautiful, uh, area uh, as they travel down to our waterfront.
And to, just to add to that, this is a part of our plan and efforts to, uh, create safe corridors for our Route two ninety-one as well, so. Um, this is a, a application to, to the Commonwealth. Of course, we have to still get approved for the grant, uh, but we're just trying to take as many steps and, and efforts as, as possible, as many as possible to create a safe haven on Route two ninety-one for the waterfront.
Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas on September twenty-fifth, twenty-fourteen, the Chester Upland School District transferred ownership of the former Pulaski School site, folio numbers to the City of Chester. And whereas the City of Chester does not intend to use the site for municipal purposes, and whereas the City of Chester desires to return the site to productive use. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the transfer of the following identified site locations to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester for the development of affordable for-sale housing. Site location, zero Harwick Street, folio number four-nine-dash-one-one-dash-zero-three-one-four-four-dash-zero-zero, zero Gray Street, four-nine-dash-one-one-dash-zero-zero-eight-eight-four-dash-zero-one, and zero Thurlow Street, four-nine-dash-one-one-dash-zero-one-nine-six-five-dash-zero-zero. Further, that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to execute all documents necessary to complete this transfer. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas the City of Chester, city, is a longtime sponsor of the Summer Food Service Program, SFSP, a federally funded, state-administered program designed to provide free healthy meals and snacks for children and teens in low-income areas. And whereas, the city's six-week program is normally held at state-approved sites where children can participate in safe activities and receive healthy SFSP meals during a supervised time period. And whereas, the city contracts for meals with a food service management company vendor who prepares and delivers said meals. And whereas, the city was notified shortly before the start of the twenty-twenty-two SFSP that the vendor was going out of business. And whereas, the city has made every possible effort to have an SFSP this year but has not been able to secure a new vendor. And whereas, the city has allocated monies for this purpose and is dedicated to its commitment to the community to feed children in the summer, in the summer, for a specified period of time. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the use of no more than ten thousand dollars from the public property and recreation budget to reimburse eligible Chester-based community organizations permitted to use city parks and property for meals they provide during selected community events through September third, twenty-twenty-two, with a one-thousand-dollar reimbursement limit per event. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the Department of Accounts and Finance to refund the stated amount to CoreLogic Tax Services, which represents a refund for the overpayment of twenty-twenty-two rubbish taxes for the following property. Refund amount, seven-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Property address, two-twenty-three West Twenty-first Street, Chester, PA, one-nine-oh-one-three. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve an order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list dated July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, attached hereto, and made a part hereof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance. So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Um, Ms. King, do we have a COVID update this, today, this morning? Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Pennsylvania Department of Health reports that there have been seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-two positive COVID cases reported in Chester since the start of the pandemic. Delaware County is currently experiencing a medium level of COVID-nineteen transmissions. According to the CDC, people may choose to mask at any time. Those at high risk for severe illness should talk to their healthcare provider about whether they need to wear a mask and take other precautions. Also, those with symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-nineteen should wear a mask. The Delaware County Health Department encourages the public to follow the CDC's recommendations for universal masking regardless of vaccination status. There have been one-hundred-and-twenty-five positive cases reported in July. This is, this number is compared to one-hundred-and-eighty-three cases reported in June, one-hundred-and-fifty-seven cases reported in May, fifty-four cases reported in April, and twenty-one cases reported in March. We recor, we encourage you to remain vigilant as you engage in your summer, in your summer festivities. We are still in a pandemic. Six City Hall employees have tested positive for COVID-nineteen since June. Just a reminder, the Health Department, along with the Human Resources Department, does provide COVID-nineteen PCR testing for all employees of Chester City Hall every Monday at ten AM. The Chester City Hall, the Health Department will start providing free COVID-nineteen rapid test kits on the days of the city council meetings. On July thirteenth, we gave away seventy-six test kits. We will be giving away test kits today, July twenty-seventh, from ten AM to one PM in the lobby. Sixty-seven percent of Chester residents have received at least one vaccine. For youth, the numbers are much lower. Only thirty-eight percent of youth, ten to eighteen, have received at least one vaccine. We encourage you to get your children vaccinated before the beg, before the beginning of the school year. The CDC recommends that everyone six months and older get their COVID-nineteen vaccine. In addition, everyone five years and older should also get a COVID-nineteen booster. COVID-nineteen vaccinations and boosters are available on August first, August fifteenth, and August twenty-ninth, from eleven to five PM at the Delaware County Health Center located at one-five-one West Fifth Street. They offer walk-ins, but you are encouraged to schedule an appointment by calling four-eight-four-two-seven-six-two-one-zero-zero. Everest Urgent Care's hours for operation are Monday through Friday, nine to six-thirty, and Saturday, nine to five-thirty. They offer walk-in COVID-PCR testing every day and walk-in vaccines and booster shots on Wednesdays and Thursdays from nine to six-thirty. If you need to schedule an appointment for the vaccine, please call four-eight-four-four-eight-zero-four-seven-zero-zero. Finally, you can also go to vaccines.gov for the most up-to-date, up-to-date appointment availability for vaccines and boosters. In June, the depart, the Health Department partnered with the Juneteenth Committee and provided nine health vendors for the festival. We also create and circulate a monthly newsletter with all of the latest information regarding COVID-nineteen. If anyone is interested in the newsletter for July, it is available on the tables downstairs. The Health Department will also participate in monthly Zoom meetings for the Chester Environmental Partnership. We will, we will meet with the Health Equity Teams monthly to get all of the updated information on COVID-nineteen. Last week, during the heat wave, we gave away one-hundred-and-fifty fans to seniors and vulnerable residents. The fans were provided by Keystone First and the Foundation for Delaware County. Stormwater and the Health Partners will provide another one-hundred fans. In August, we will also resume our COVID-nineteen Coalition Meetings with the Health Partners from the surrounding areas to discuss COVID-nineteen and what we can do to increase our vaccination rates and keep our residents safe. Finally, the Biden Administration's new nine-eight-eight Suicide and Crisis Prevention Hotline is now available. Nine-eight-eight offers twenty-four-seven access to trained crisis counselors who can help people experiencing mental health crisis-related distress, which could be thoughts of suicide, mental health or substance use crisis, or any kind of emotional distress. People can call or text nine-eight-eight or chat at nine-eight-eight lifelinehealth.org for themselves or if they are worried about a loved one who may need crisis's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King, and thank you for that thorough update. We appreciate all you do in our Health Department. Also, we want to thank both you and Ms. Rosetta Carter for reaching out to those agencies and providing fans for our seniors and those persons who are in need trying to keep them cool in some kind of way or another. So thank you, both you and Ms. Carter, for all your work. Okay. We're going to.
We also had cooling stations too provided by Councilwoman Williams and her department. One cooling station, um, during this extreme heat was, um, at the, um, Chatham Estates Community Center. And then I believe the, um, Salvation Army, right, thank you. Salvation Army was also another, um, area where people could go to get cool and get out of the extreme heat. So we wanted you to know that we are mindful of all of the residents as we go through the COVID crisis as well as this extreme heat that we've been experiencing. We always have you in mind.
Commission?
Casey Morris, Representative.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have one more presentation. We do want to remind, uh, the residents, once again, if you are going to speak to address counsel, that we asked that you would sign in a sign-in sheet, your name, your address, so that you might be able to, uh, pose your questions and/or comments. At this time, we're going to ask, uh, Dr. Ron Vincy, Renzi. He's coming to us today to provide us with information on, uh, COVID and, uh, the other infectious disease that is attacking our country, uh, entitled monkeypox.
Thank you. Good morning, uh, Mayor and Council, and morning fellow citizens. Uh, just a little bit of, uh, additional news on COVID. It's very important that if you have symptoms, that you go and get a test. Even if the symptoms are mild in the beginning, you should get a test. And the reason is there are antiviral pills that you can take, but they only are effective if you take them within three to five days of the onset of symptoms. So, if you're getting sick, you, you may have COVID, you may, you have a cough and a fever, and you wait two weeks and then get a test, the doctor's not going to want to prescribe it because it's not very effective. The pill, the antiviral pills only work in the very beginning. So, if you're, you develop, you, you know you were exposed to somebody, and you start to develop some symptoms, you need to get a test right away so you can get on the antiviral pills. And those pills have been proven to prevent hospitalization. So, if you get these pills, it prevents you from going, getting really sick and going into a hospital, getting intubated and things like that. So, um, I just wanted to mention that about COVID, that you're also going to be hearing a lot about monkeypox. Monkeypox is growing in the United States very rapidly. It is a disease caused by a virus, and it causes you to get the same kind of symptoms. Fever, chills, malaise, um, but it's also associated with a skin rash. The way you get monkeypox is through respiratory droplets. It's the same thing that you get with COVID, right? Little particles come out of your mouth, and that's why we're all wearing masks. And I'd, I'd like to commend the mayor for maintaining that, uh, universal masking. Um, it's very important, and, um, and it's really important now that monkeypox is around. It's the same way you could prevent getting those respiratory droplets by using masks. The other way you get monkeypox is to touch somebody who has monkeypox, that touched the actual pox or pimple, um, the rash. If you touch it, you can get it, and then, and you touch your mouth, and then you'll, you'll get monkeypox. Now, monkeypox is not a deadly virus. It will not kill you, but it will make you very sick, and it's from the pox family. The pox, a pox is a little crater or a little divot in your skin. So, when you get that rash, it leaves you with a whole bunch of, um, little divots in your skin, or, or pox. Um, it's very unsightly, it's very uncomfortable, um, and they're permanent. So, um, it's not, it, and, and it, it's a, not a deadly virus, but it can cause a lot of problems. It, and it does, the symptoms are very much like COVID, um, fever, chills, and malaise. But again, it's not a deadly virus, but you can avoid it by using masks and, um, not coming in per- personal contact with somebody who has, um, the mo- the, 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 the virus, or has the pox, the rash. So, you'll be hearing more of it. It's growing very, very rapidly right now. So, you're going to hear more about it. There is a, a vaccine for it. If they're trying to ramp it up, right now, the va- vaccine's very hard to get. Um, but it should become more common, um, as, as they learn to, to make the, the vaccine, uh, more effective. So, you're, you're going to hear a lot more about it. It's growing very, very rapidly. But again, remember, it's not a deadly virus, but it is something to be cautious about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Renzi, and thank you for that, uh, information. It's always good to have, um, helpful information that will keep us safe, and we hope that our community will follow those directions, um, so that we can remain safe and healthy. Ms. Smith?
Good morning.
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 Um, I have a question, um, on your no- because you didn't ask for public comments before, I'm going to ask this. Uh, on number six, the C, the Chief Operating Officer position. Um, where, where is this that person's salary come from? It's come from the city, or does it come from a special grant? Or, or what? And what are the, what are the responsibilities of, of this COO?
That comes from the city's budget. Um, we will be, uh, paying for that. The status of, uh, a physician that has been agreed upon by both, uh, mayor and council, and, uh, the receiver, uh, dowry and his team. Um, also, um, the other part of your question was?
The responsibilities.
Responsibilities, responsibilities.
This person, like, they're getting paid like the, like they're the governor or something, but.
Well, the responsibility of the COO is to take some of the weight off of, um, mayor and council. Um, they will be, uh, the, the point person dealing with most of our staffing here in the ci- here in City Hall. Um, not just staffing here in City Hall, but, uh, some of our business persons, uh, our, our community at large. Um, there'll, there'll be a number of responsibilities that the COO has.
Okay, and there's a job description written somewhere that someone can look at, like myself?
Yes.
Just to see what their qualification, because I know we had a, a prior COO, a- and it seems like the salary goes up and up and up, so I guess the responsibilities is going to go up and up and up also.
The responsibilities will be, be greater, um, yes.
Okay, all right. Now, my follow-up question. Um, Ms. Moore, I did get a chance to read your document, uh, and, um, of the dangerous equipments to be removed at the parks. Now, I'm, I'm going to assume that is, um, one phase one, so what's the next phase? Because the only parks that were identified are eight, and I know you have more than eight parks within the city. So, is, um, uh, is there another phase? And plus, have you created for the parks and, um, rep a management system with policies and procedures?
You'll see more park improvements.
So, you're, I'm saying, have you, has it been created, then I was asking? Did you cre- create the procedure? Because I noticed, and, and, you know, you like to write a lot, so I'm just going to rephrase on what you write, that you're, you know, you're having that, so I'm just wondering, has it been created? And then you asked for help. I've volunteered myself for the help, but I haven't heard anything to, uh, as far as the meeting thusforth coming up.
If there's anything you'd like to see done in the parks, just let me know.
Okay. Secondly, I had another, I had asked you earlier on, a couple of months ago, about the quality of the air quality in your buildings. Did you get a chance to read the memo that was given to the receiver? Or did he provide that information to you?
If you have a memo you'd like me to read, please send it to me.
Okay, but I'm, see, I gave that memo when I was here once upon a time. Um, I see the receiver in the, in the audience, so I just wanted to make sure that, Mr. Receiver, please give him the memo that I sent to you and rep the relationship to the air quality in these buildings that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Are you ladies waiting to address? I didn't hear you. We've, just, I mean, I, I would ask that you would sign in, and we always keep the sign-in sheet right up here, okay?
Thank you. I didn't want to cross nobody.
McDaniel, Ms. McDaniel?
Good morning.
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 Um, I'm here to talk about the walking trail over Erie Park. The upkeep of it. It's a group of us seniors that walk, that walking trail. The maintenance on it is horrible. I have some pictures here. This here grate, weeds has grown through the grate. This is the red trash can. This is, not only this one, trash can grate, because these, the ceiling has fallen down some of it. This is just weeds, this, to walk people down, feel like the road, the weeds is coming over. This, accidently even happened. You know, uh, people are too happy.
Can I see that?
Over four hundred forty thousand dollars was put into this here walking trail. At least keep the maintenance up on it.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. McDaniel, that is the responsibility of the Stormwater Authority. And, um, not the city, but we will inform them of your concerns and, uh, their need to do a better job.
Okay.
And upkeep.
Thank you.
But I, I can address a little of that. There is some work going on in that building right now. It's being, uh, convert, I, I didn't know Stormwater was, was involved. Yes, I have seen that. That's as a result of a skylight that's up above, at, right where your finger is. There's a skylight, the skylight's leaking the seals, and the water has come down, and yes, we under- I understand. That's what I'm saying. That's the ro- that's the reason the drywall on that ceiling is down. You can't fix that until you fix the skylight. So, there's four skylights in that building. There was a bad bathroom. There was a bunch of junk. Um, you may or not have seen the work that's going on in that building, but incrementally, it is getting done. So, I don't want you to not believe work isn't getting done. It's going to be converted into an environmental center for kids to work. Uh, there are tools in there now. Uh, i- it was a big mess. But until the skylights get fixed, the drywall is next. The bathrooms are working now inside the building. Uh, we're looking for funding to get the drywall fixed. There's water run to that building now. There's a lot that's been done to the building, that most of it's been inside, but thanks for bringing it to our attention. I will reach.
And that is the Stormwater issue.
Yes, yes, we've, yes, understand, understand. Uh, we have addressed the grass cutting with our Public Works Department. Uh, if they're not out there today, I know they're going to be out there this week. What I can't promise you is that every blade of grass is going to be cut close. What we've asked them to do is where the walking paths are to clear the high grass next to those paths. So, there will probably be some high grass still remaining in the core of the airpark, but these are all, uh, issues that, that we're aware of. I guess I have to speak to, uh, speak to Stormwater to see what their role is in maintaining this area, because to my knowledge, nothing's been done on behalf of. Yeah, but our guys have been out there. So, Rodney? Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up.
Ms. Duncan?
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. Um, I recently opened a daycare on West Eighth Street, eight-twenty-eight. Next to my daycare, three shipping containers were placed there over the weekend, about three months ago. I've called numerous occasions asking, you know, who they belong to, because my parents are asking me what's inside of them, and I don't know. The grass is very high. There's now greyhounds in the grass, had babies. They're digging holes under the fence into my backyard, so my kids can't come outside and play. And I just want some kind of result. Um, the grass either be cut, the, the containers be removed. No one is seeming to answer any of my questions when I call on who they belong to. I did notice that, um, Ellen and I came out and placed stickers on all three of them. I watched the man, we moved the stickers, so they're still there. And I just wanted to know if anyone knew who they belong to and why the grass isn't being cut. Eight-twenty-eight West Eighth Street, Eighth and Lincoln. For the grass? You said the grass was not high? You want to see pictures? I'll show you. The grass is very high. The groundhounds are in the grass, having babies. But if the stickers were placed, why weren't they removed?
Are they Mister, excuse me, are they Mister, uh, Icona's, um, containers?
No.
They're not his? Okay, so we have to find out. Do we know whose containers they are?
I was told on the phone call that someone had permit for that, but if they had permit, why were stickers replaced there?
We'll speak with our, we'll speak with our inspectors and find out exactly what's going on, put on your behalf. Do we have a, can we make sure you give him a number so that we can reach back out to you?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Johnson? Morning.
Good morning. Um, a couple of months ago, I, I came in and I was concerned about the two-hour parking, um, notifications, uh, there on Wall Street, when everyone on that block has four-hour venues.
Hold that mic down, just a little, the mic.
Morning. Um, I was saying, I was in a couple of months ago. I was concerned about the two-hour parking that the gentleman put up along our block, um, when everyone on that block has four-hour venues. Um, and I know you guys said you were going to check into that, um, but nothing has been done. Thank God, nobody has any tickets, but, um, I was just wondering where we are with that situation. And also, um, as I was sitting there listening to, um, you speak about the cooling stations for people that need to be helped with the extreme heat, I would like to know some more information, because I would like to be a part of the cooling station, um, at the ballroom, if possible.
You can see, um, Commissioner Gretzky.
Okay.
Thank you.
For which park? The cooling station? Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rigby.
I'm sorry, Rigby.
Okay, and, um, have we gotten any resolution on, or an update about the two-hour parking on the block?
I'll have an update on you, on you, I have an update for you by today.
Okay.
I'll talk with those persons and have an update.
Okay, thank you very much, have a great one.
Thank you. Thank you, um, members of Council, we have closing comments, Councilman Roots?
I have none.
Councilman West?
I have none.
Councilman Wigan?
I have some. Uh, just quickly, uh, I just wanna thank all of the, everyone, I don't know who, who they all were, whether they're business owners, constituents, residents, that came out to the American Rescue Plan meeting held that was, uh, last Wednesday. Uh, we got a lot of great feedback, uh, from the community, uh, with the presentation that we presented. Uh, I don't have a date yet on when we'll be able to pro, provide more of a follow-up, uh, but we have weekly meetings internally, uh, with our, our American Rescue Plan, uh, team and committee, uh, as well as our consultants as well, so, um, again, we'll be able to provide more, uh, detail on what our next steps will be in the very near future. Uh, to stay updated, uh, join our, or visit our website, um, www.chesetercity.com. There's a tab for ARPA, A-R-P-A, or the American Rescue Plan, we can stay up to date with the projects, or, uh, um, the, the project tracker and our filings of the reports as well, so, and, lastly, Mayor Rufus, are you gonna speak on this? Okay. Um, I'm not sure if it's in everyone's seat, or if it's up there at the front, but I do know, uh, it'll be on our website, we posted on our social media platforms, and possibly out at the front lobby as well, uh, the City of Chester is preparing, uh, their new comprehensive plan, uh, which would be a comp plan that'll, uh, take us to roughly about twenty forty, the year twenty forty. Uh, the last comp plan was twenty twelve, so we're looking to update that. Um, so you will be hearing more information from, uh, the City Planning Department, uh, Mr. Peter Reichert and, and, and Ms. Joanne Neal. Uh, they'll be reaching out to the community, so that you can have, uh, your part, your, uh, stake in, in, in conversations, uh, with the, uh, comp plan, and what we need to make sure that we include within the comp plan, so, uh, be on the lookout for more information, uh, for that, I don't believe that there is a date set on the meeting, or if there's been any individuals that has been contacted as of yet, but if you are looking for more information, uh, please reach out to the Planning Department at six one zero four four seven 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 zero seven, uh, or you can email Mr. Peter Reichert at P Reichert, which is P-R-Y-K-A-R-D at chestercity.com. And again, this is our Chester City, uh, comprehensive plan for twenty forty, or through twenty forty, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Williams?
Okay.
You're good. Alright, thank you, just real quickly, uh, once again, we had our food truck festival, uh, this last Friday, was very successful. A number of residents and non-residents showed up to participate. Our goal is to bring more traffic on, to downtown Chester, so that we might be able to help our vendors. We had a good time, we had a very good time, we will continue to do this, uh, we're considering possibly pushing it into September as well, because we wanna make sure that our downtown businesses flourish. Um, so, it was, it was an excellent day, also, uh, was that the same day that the Water Park Party, uh, by, uh, held by Ronde Jefferson, one of our very own? Um, they didn't get me this time, thank goodness, but the young people, and the old, the adults had a great time down Memorial Park. Uh, just having some fun, food, and just great activities. Also, Ma, uh, Ma Keese Davis, um, the son of Casey, uh, they had, held an event at the Boys and Girls Club that was very successful, an athletic event, a basketball tournament, uh, in remembrance of his son slash grandson's name, that was very well attended. Uh, and, uh, the young people showed their skills, and they had a great time along with their parents. And finally, we've gotten more weapons off the streets, by way of our gun buyback. Um, Commissioner Gretzky is going to post them, uh, on our website as well. Um, more high-powered weapons that have been taken off the streets, um, by our successful gun buyback program. We're excited about that, and not just about gun buyback program, but because of the hard work of our law enforcement personnel to make our city a safer city. Our goal is always to be zero, zero homicides, zero crime, that is the goal, and we're working towards that, and I wanna say, I appreciate our law enforcement personnel, uh, and our firefighters for all that they do. Please, please, lot of, and, and, and also down at the pool, under the direction of, uh, Councilman Roots, uh, you know that it's been extremely hot, extremely hot, uh, these last few days, and a number of young persons and families, families, have been coming down to the pool to cool off and enjoy themselves. Um, I, I cannot say this enough, too often folks say that there's nothing to do for our young people in the city. I beg to differ, there's plenty to do, we wanna make sure that we get our parents involved in the lives of these young people, and participate with them, um, and, uh, this summer has been a very safe summer, um, because of the work of not only our law enforcement personnel in this council, but also because of parents like yourselves, that, uh, make sure that your, your children have healthy wholesome activities that they can attend and be a part of, so our hats off to you as well. Um, with that said, we wanna thank you for being here today, this council meeting is now...